Do we have too much government?
We need to put people ahead of appropriate profits.
This system is so lopsided. This threat is a real threat to democracy.
And I think that's really important. That's something we haven't been doing in this country for a long time.
Where do you start? What do you do? How do you do it?
Access to Democracy and other Eagan Community Television programming is supported by Thomson Reuters, makers of Westlon Next and based in Eagan. Through Westlon Next and other innovative online services, Thomson Reuters is the world's leading source of intelligent information for businesses and professionals, online at thompsonreuters.com. And by U.S. Federal Credit Union, the member-owned financial institution offering service, value, and experience you can trust to the greater Twin Cities community.
Welcome. Access to Democracy returns. I'm your host, Alan Miller, and we have with us an incumbent Eagan Councilman, Paul Bakken, who you've served three terms, two consecutive, one earlier.
That's right.
And then you decided to retire, and then you were unretired. Is that a fair statement?
That's a fair statement.
Okay.
Thanks for having me. It's good to be back.
No, it's good to have you, Paul. And why don't you give a little bit of background and business experience, other than the council?
Sure. I am an attorney, focused on small business law and contracts. I've also served in the Minnesota Army National Guard and have done work with a variety of nonprofit groups, including Legal Assistance of Dakota County and the 5P+ Society, which is a North American support group for children and families affected by 5P+ syndrome.
And in addition to all that, you have been on this council over this last tumultuous four years, in which we saw the vacant Cedarvale area become the Paragon Outlet Mall, which has gotten so much publicity. And give us a little bit of background about what you had to go through to make that happen.
A lot of what contributed to that success was a determination by the council to be patient, even during the worst times of the recession, and not follow through on just any old proposal that came to the council. We really stuck to our guns and worked with our consultants to bring forward the best development, which manifested itself in the Paragon Outlet Mall. So by being patient and sticking to our standards, we were able to facilitate that development, which already is, but is going to be a tremendous asset, not just for Eagan, but for the overall region.
And it's also going to be a financial asset, if I'm not mistaken.
Oh, without question. The development of the Paragon Mall now has greatly increased the desirability of the remaining parcels in the TIF redevelopment district. So despite the recession, it appears that the TIF district will perform pretty close to as planned. And after it's retired in 2023, all of that additional tax increment that's being generated will go back into the general fund and benefit not just the city, but also the school district in the county.
And we're not talking about nickels and dimes. We're talking about millions of dollars.
It's a significant impact. That's right.
In addition to that, am I correct that there's a hotel that's going in down there and a housing development?
Yeah. The hotel is being done by the Morrissey Group, and it'll be sited in one of the two pads that's sort of up on top of the parking structure, abutting the parkway. And the housing that'll be going in is sort of in the corner site in the northeast. And it's market-rate apartments with a little bit of commercial space on the bottom on one side. So it's a good blend, and all of the developers have been good about adhering to the architectural standards that tie in the entire area. So as these pieces come together in the redevelopment area, it's becoming closer to the vision that the council had, which was of a diverse and walkable, economically thriving section of town.
So not only is it going to throw off a lot of dollars and help the tax burden, although Eagan, I think, has the third lowest city taxes of any city over $50,000 in the state, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right?
Historically, we're in the low five. It might jump around a little bit from year to year, but yeah.
But we've taken land that was fallow and really turned it into something that's not only benefiting us, but is going to bring attraction to the community.
Absolutely. And if used well and correctly, that's what a TIF district does. It allows a city to float bonds, to make infrastructure improvements that then makes redevelopment of an area attractive to the private market, so that those companies and people reinvest in the community and build things like the hotels and the outlet mall, and that increment of increased values captured to pay off the bonds.
TIF, of course, stands for Tax Increment Financing, which not everybody may be familiar with. But it means that the city is helping out these people who are bringing all this into the community, and then ultimately, the city benefits when the financing, you said, what's that, in 10 years?
Yeah. And currently, it's anticipated that the TIF bonds will expire in 2023, round about there.
So it's less than 10 years. We also have two other large housing developments going up in the city, so let's talk about those.
Sure. There's actually more than just two. So which ones in particular were you interested in?
Well, I pass the one on Cliff Road very often. We also have one up on Yankee Doodle or right off Yankee Doodle, so let's start with that.
Well, that'd be, if I'm tracking with you, the Carriage Hills and the Parkview sites.
Right.
That developments actually have different names, but the reason that we, most of us remember them by those names, were that they were formerly golf courses that were then repurposed and redeveloped as housing. So they're online, and they're going in. Those land use changes were not something that personally I supported, but the reguiding did go through. And, you know, I think that the focus of the entire council has been, even though we may have disagreed on the land use change, to make those developments as functional and as much of an asset to the community as possible.
In fact, I think you were the only one on the council who voted no in some of these cases, if I'm not mistaken.
Yeah, that's correct.
An independent looking at what he views as best for the city. And ultimately, there are hundreds of houses that'll be, and other uses that'll be coming in again, which will benefit the tax burden.
Yeah, and you referenced, you know, independent and looking out for what's best for the city. I think it would be fair to say that everybody on the council does that. You know, from time to time, there are issues about which we disagree. But by all of us working together, trying to advocate for what we think is best, we usually arrive at a solution that ends up working out okay.
Well, the council is nonpartisan. It's not guided, nor is anybody, the mayor or anybody else, an officer in a political party. So really, what you people do is work things out among yourself and do what's best for the city.
I think local government works best when it's nonpartisan. At least, that's been my experience.
What else is going on in the city?
Oh, lots of good things. You know, the best news as of late is that with the most recent budget that's in the process of being approved, we've finally seen, you know, very substantial signs that at least the local economy has turned the corner. People are building again, businesses are expanding. For the first time in many years, the tax base itself is expanding after a long period of contraction. So that's good news. One of the things that's contributing to that is the decision by Data Bank Holdings to locate a co-location facility here in the city of Eagan. And for people who may not know, a co-location facility is where, the easiest way to describe it is, that's where the long-haul internet connections to other municipal areas come into a region, and then from there, all the different carriers interconnect and split things out to the local area.
And that's coming here also?
Yeah. Right now, most of Minnesota is served by one building in Minneapolis called the 511 Building. If something were to happen to that building, or for southern Minnesota, the connection across the river, there would be no internet effectively for those folks. This facility will offer some backup and an alternate path, which is good for local businesses and businesses all over Minnesota.
And I just read something that said that both Standard and Poor's and Moody's Bond Rating Companies have given the city of Eagan AAA, which is the highest bond rating. Is that correct?
That's correct. We got the second AAA rating just this last year, so we now have the highest possible ratings from both rating agencies. And, you know, that's pretty confident. You know, that's a pretty good reflection of the financial practices and the overall financial health of our community.
What else is happening in the city?
Well, I don't know if people had a chance to go down to the Eagan's very first food truck festival. You know, that's a little bit on the lighter side, but that was a huge success. Many thousands of people went down and enjoyed the festivities and the food that was there to be enjoyed. And that really fits well with some of the community activities that we've been doing for a longer time, like Market Fest, the Wednesday activities out at the Community Center grounds.
Now, I'm, I think, a 17-year resident of Eagan, but here, more by accident than by choice, because I was with Thomson Reuters at the time we moved here, and I wanted to be close to the office, as did my wife.
You and quite a few other people, yeah.
Yeah. But since that time, I've seen Cascade Bay open up as a great facility. We have great parks and lakes, and I've also seen a new fire center go in. And there has been just a constant progress of really things that are citizen-oriented that really make this a great place to live.
I think that a lot of the credit for that goes back to our residents, both our residents and business owners. You know, as a community, we're blessed by having people who live and work here, who put a priority on reinvesting in the community and trying to make sure that Eagan's a good place to live, work, and raise our families. So as long as resources are being spent prudently and responsibly, this is a community that expects its city leaders to invest in things like solid infrastructure and amenities like a strong park system and some of the community events that we enjoy.
And I would be remiss if I didn't mention also the Community Center, which is not that old and really affords so much in programming for the community.
True. You know, not without controversy at the time, but definitely one of the more used facilities in the city.
Okay. And all this has happened while you've been in and out of the council, really, over those last, well, it's now eight years running consecutive, right?
That's right.
And you're ready to continue for another four years?
Well, you know, if people are willing to put up with me, I'm willing to serve another four and help finish off some of the things we started. I'd especially like to see the Cedar Grove redevelopment area completed and get those last parcels online and get the district functioning as a whole.
Good. And a lot of progress has been made in something that's close to me, senior citizens' comfort. We have not only places to live, but we have really great facilities for senior citizens here, so.
Yeah, we're also blessed with a really good relationship with the Dakota County CDA. They do a number of programs and facilities for senior citizens, and, you know, we have the opportunity to work with Mark Olver.
I want to thank Councilman Paul Bakken. I don't want to cut him off, but.
No, no problem.
For coming in and seeking reelection, thanks so much. Welcome back. Alan Miller with you again, and we're in a sort of a bifurcated system today where we're bringing all four council candidates to the public, to the viewers. And we have with us at the moment David Meyer, who is running for the council for the first time. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Now, you're a nine-year resident of Eagan in the printing business, and what prompted you to run for council?
Well, it was something I was kind of playing around with for quite a while, as far as just running for it, but the main impetus to make me do it at this point was the parking ramp at Cedarvale. I thought that that was an excessive amount of money to spend on, of taxpayer money for a ramp. It probably could have got the developers to take care of it. I really, I'm at the point in my life now where I can actually give the time to do something like that. I was planning originally on doing it a couple of years, but actually, the next election.
Now, have you served on any of the advisory councils or the city commissions?
No, I have not.
Okay. What about attendance at city meetings?
I've been to, well, probably a good, at least half dozen of them. They had the big meeting at the civic center for the, when they were talking about the parking situation and everything, when they were opening up the mall. I thought that was quite interesting. There was a lot of residents there. Most of the times I've gone to the city council meetings, there's very few people in there, unless they have a specific issue they're addressing.
Well, a lot of zoning problems and things like that.
Yeah.
Now, you objected to the city investing in the parking, which really accommodates the new shopping center, does it not?
Well, I guess it could, but, I mean, the developer could have just as easily picked that up, I would assume. Now, maybe that wasn't something they could make in the deal. Obviously, I couldn't be in all these deals. This whole thing with the mall has been going on for a very long time. So that's all stuff that's been placed even before this council and the mayor came in. They were already starting on that. They started that over, what, 10, 12 years ago? Longer than that even?
To accommodate the building of the Paragon Mall, which has over 100 stores in it.
Yeah.
They needed a parking ramp. Is it fair to say that this mall is going to throw off tremendous income in years to come toward the tax base?
Well, I guess we'll have to wait and see about that. Well, for instance, I mean, Shakopee just had a deal. It came with an independent school district, 191, for Rosemont Company, where there's a building they want to expand down there. Now, they put together a $6 million deal for that. That's bringing in 500 jobs. It's taken an $8 million buildings and it turned into a $22 million building, and a big percentage of those jobs are going to be over $3 an hour. I believe it was 30%, 40% of them. So, I mean, those are real jobs. Now, this created 1,000 jobs that are, 1,000 net part, net full-time jobs, that are all basically retail jobs. Now, I don't think there's going to be very many $30 an hour jobs there. So yes, they took them all out and they put in a new mall. Now, I thought originally, when they pulled the mall out, they were going to put in residential, mixed residential areas and some parks and stuff. And I think that would have done just about the same thing for the tax base.
Well, there is a hotel that's going to go in, and there is another housing development that's going to go in there.
Yes, there is.
So ultimately, they will have those things.
Yes, but I think originally, it was going to be all housing. So, you know, I mean, I don't know. It changes, they've been going back and forth about that whole section for a very, very long time, and it was all done with eminent domain. We've got over $60 million invested in there, and that's before you even throw the, I believe that's before you throw the interest on the bond issue for that parking ramp. So, I mean, that's a lot of money to invest. It really is.
And you don't see it coming back in terms of increased tax base?
I think it's going to take a long time for that to come back in taxes.
Well, hopefully.
I mean, they're already asking for three more years' extension on the TIF district. So that's telling me right now that they're not getting the appreciation they were hoping for. Now, sure, there's a recession. I mean, that's part of it, but there's a lot of other TIF districts that didn't have any of those problems either, or they're not asking for extensions.
Well, the extension, I think, is going to terminate, what, in eight years? And then the revenue will come to the city after the TIF district expires.
I believe it was a 28-year TIF, and they're asking for three more. Now, when that exact runout date is, I'm not sure of.
It started way back, though.
Yeah, I'm sure it did, when they first started with the whole acquiring it. I don't know the exact year.
We had the concept, and then we had really some fallow years where we had the recession. And fortunately, we didn't get into a lot of debt at that time. When it was over and things started to pick up, as employment has started to pick up, we went ahead with this, and it seems to be something that has people very excited.
Well, it's a nice mall. You know, it is. Honestly, I mean, if we were going to build the mall, I think we probably would have been better off putting it over by the existing shopping area up on Yankee Doodle, where we actually have the traffic things in place that would handle that. Of course, it's also the busiest intersection in town, that Yankee Doodle, Pilot Knob and all that up in there.
And what about the access here to 13 and to 77 that are right there, and the bus station? Doesn't that count for anything?
Well, you know, I mean, it is what it is. It's there. Decisions have been made. I mean, you would have pretty much the same access with 35 and everything if you'd have put it up over by where the Lockheed Martin was. There's a whole lot of space over there, but, you know.
Now, one of the things that you said in a newspaper interview is that the current council has its share of professional politicians. They serve on other boards, et cetera.
Yeah, they do.
Who's a professional politician on the council?
Well, I would argue that Yuri Hansen's a professional politician. I mean, he's got other interests. He's, you know, he still works for a living, but he's on so many boards. There was rumors of him getting appointments from Governor Dayton. There's, you know.
Don't you think that's a good thing, to have council representing us outside of the city?
Well, there's not necessarily anything wrong with it, but it's just the entire council is filled with a lot of people who've all, they're all lawyers, they're all connected in, all these things. There's no real representation of people who actually work for a living. And you look at, I think that one of the problems with, when I say professional politicians, is when you get into a position like that, and all of a sudden, you think $20 million isn't a lot of money, that's symptomatic of professional politicians. They don't really think of that, oh, that's not much money, that's not much money. I mean, look at the old City Hall building. I mean, they're talking about refurbishing that, and they can't find anything for under $400,000. I mean, how many of those could you build for $400,000?
Are you talking about the building that was arson, damaged?
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, it's, to me, I think, yeah, I think it's time that we start putting some regular citizens in.
None of these people.
Get some of the representation.
None of these people, I think, hold a political job. I might be wrong in one respect, because I think Cindy Fields at one point did have a political job, but none of the rest of them are what I would call professional politicians.
Well, those are, a bunch of those boards that Gary serves on are elected boards. And Dakota County Electric Board, I believe that's, isn't that also a somewhat elected board?
Well, I don't call that a political position.
Well, it's, you know, I mean, it depends on how you look at it, I guess.
If I'm not mistaken, and one thing about the city council that has always pleased me as a resident is the fact that they really are nonpartisan. They don't run with a party label. They run individually. Didn't you seek the endorsement of the Republican Party?
You can't get an endorsement for a city council.
You didn't get an endorsement?
No.
Did you seek it?
You can't seek, you can't get an endorsement, so why would you seek an endorsement?
Well, because there was publicity that said that you had sought Republican Party endorsement.
Oh, I hadn't heard that.
And, yeah, it did appear in the press, as a matter of fact.
Really?
Yeah.
Well, that's interesting.
So that's wrong?
Yeah, there, you cannot get endorsed for city council. It's a nonpartisan position.
You also were concerned about the fire department? What were your concerns with the fire department?
Well, they're talking about taking the five stations down to three, and I'm not real crazy about that idea. I personally think that we should be able to keep a volunteer fire department. I don't think our city's big enough to go to a full-time type of fire department, and the costs, I think, are going to be.
Well, we just got some federal money to assist us with hiring some full-timers, because we haven't had enough volunteers. How do you get more volunteers?
Well, if I was in the council, the first thing I'd do is I'd get exit interviews from everybody over the last seven or eight years since we started having this problem, and find out what it is that we need to change to get, to keep these volunteers. I mean, we didn't have a problem with it before. Now, there's a demographic shift, yes, okay, but there's still, there's tons of 24 to 34-year-olds in this town. I mean, they're all over the place.
Do we have the demographics on that?
Well, I don't have them, not on hand. I mean, you probably get them out of the census. I'm sure the city can get them. But I'd go out and try and hit, I'd go to the door-to-door if I had to. But I don't understand why, all of a sudden, we can't get volunteers when we never had the problem before. Now, there is a shift.
Have you heard of aging population?
Yeah, I've heard of it, yeah. Yeah, and, you know, but we had people that are quitting, that are not quitting because of their age. They're leaving. So why are they leaving? What is the issues?
Have you checked with any of these people to see why they're leaving?
I've talked to a few people, and I've gotten some feedback.
Why are they, why are they leaving? We have a very active fire chief. We have a terrific safety program. So why are these people leaving?
Well, I can't, I can't account for everybody. I can only tell the two or three people I've talked to. And one of them says, basically, it's almost impossible to get your hours, because they have the full-time people there, and every time a call comes in, they send them out on the calls, so they get their percentages very hard. Now, I'm not in there working that, so I can't tell. So exit interviews would be very helpful, because then you can find out over a group of people where your patterns are, just like any business would do that. You know, I mean, that's how you would handle that in the private sector, because when you're losing people, it's a management problem. You've got to figure out how to keep your people. You've got to figure out how to attract people. I don't think throwing out the, maybe you need to throw out the business plan. I don't think we do. I think that there, I think we can keep a volunteer fire department, and we don't need to spend another $4.5 million for another firehouse. We can just keep the ones we have, and at least for three to five years, when we pay off some of the debt that we're carrying, and then maybe revisit it.
But creating a new firehouse, as I understand it, will make response time quicker to fires, and we have not had a tragedy, knock wood, unfortunately. But by making response time quicker, and a perfect example is the new command headquarters on Yankee Doodle Road as an example of, I think, money well spent. You don't think so?
$8 million for a firehouse? No, I don't think that's money well spent. I think that's excessive. I think that's too much money for a fire station. You know, I mean, the command center, maybe that, maybe that does help. I, you know, I would suggest it, cutting it, maybe spending $4 million or $5 million on it? You know, I don't think you need to spend it. There's, I mean, it's a beautiful building. It is. It's beautiful.
It's a training facility.
But it doesn't need to be that beautiful. It needs to be attractive. It needs to be affordable.
Well, where would you cut?
Where would I cut? It's already built. There's nothing we can do about it.
Yeah, but if you were on the planning stage.
If I would have been building it, I would have, I would have probably cut most of the stonework out. There's a couple of walls that are just there. They look like they're just esoteric. You know, I mean, there's, they don't seem to have any function. I probably would have took the limestone out, made a nice brick building, so it matched all the other firehouses we have around town, and called that good. I bet you could have probably knocked 30%, 40% off the price of that.
All right. So we know what's troubling you about Eagan, which is, had a 95% satisfaction rate when the citizens were polled year before last.
Of course, yeah.
But we've been talking with David Meyer, and he's seeking his first appointment or his first election to the city council, and the election is two months, excuse me, two months away. So we wish you luck. We're back on Access to Democracy with our city council afternoon, and we have with us Gail Anderson, who is running for the city council, I believe, for the first time. Is that right?
Well, I ran a couple of times before, back, I don't know, it was '96 or '98, somewhere back there, yes.
That's in another century. We don't count that.
That was, exactly.
Right. But you've been an Eagan resident for a long time.
Yes, 25 years, exactly, yes.
Give us a little bit of background, why you wanted to run. Give us a little bit of background, why you wanted to run for the council at this point.
A few guys were kind of chatting about what was happening with the city council, just kind of talking about longevity, and who's been in there for several years. And we thought maybe it'd be a good idea to throw our hat in the ring, just kind of stir things up.
Now, the city council, of course, is nonpartisan.
Yes.
So, this has no political affiliation with it, is that correct?
Absolutely, that's correct. Yep, no affiliation at all.
Although you are married to a former-
State representative.
Republican representative, yes.
Yes, yes.
And I guess that that's going well?
Oh, absolutely. Oh, yeah, we have a great relationship. She certainly would have liked to have stayed in office more years than she was, but, you know, things come and go.
The vagaries of elections.
Absolutely.
Which is why you're here now, running as a candidate, when we have incumbent candidates running also.
Absolutely, yes.
What can you improve in the city of Eagan? What needs improving in the city of Eagan?
You know, among the various things that we've looked at is just budgeting concerns. Some people have brought up some of the issues as far as how money is being spent, and should we be cutting back on some of those expenses?
For instance?
There was an $8 million fire station that was built, and some have suggested that that might be a little overkill. There were, there's a $21 million parking ramp that went with the outlet center, and that seemed to be another issue that brought up some red flags. People were asking questions of, you know, why so much money spent just on a parking ramp? And I believe about $12.5 million of that is bonding, so that, when it's paid out over 15 years, that actually, just like buying a house, a 15-year mortgage ends up doubling the price. You buy your house for $100,000, you pay on a 15-year mortgage, you end up paying, because of the interest, it ends up being about $200,000. So similarly, a $12.5 million bond will probably end up costing about $25 million, on top of the $9 million that's being spent to put up a parking ramp. And there's really no return-
But the parking ramp is, or was considered to be, a necessary accommodation to get the Paragon Outlet Mall here, which has now opened and is flourishing in its first month or so-
Sure.
-with over 100 stores. Didn't the city have a responsibility to see to it that there's parking-
Absolutely.
-for the people who are, you know, purchasing, and who are going to really add to our tax base from the income?
Right, absolutely. I think that there is, there is a necessity to put in that, the parking ramp. The issue is, how much money do you spend on a parking ramp? That, to me, is where the issue is, that's where the concern is.
Do you know if we could have done it cheaper?
I had heard from various people that, yes, it could have been done cheaper.
And did you express that to the council?
I did not.
Do you, and I know you've been on some commissions.
Yes.
Do you attend meetings regularly?
I do not.
Or irregularly even?
No, I have been to a few. I typically haven't been. More often than not, it would be watching them on TV, you know, getting, having an opportunity to watch on the local channel, the Egan Access Channels, but-
Which is what you're on right now.
Absolutely, you bet.
And, now, you said that the, in a newspaper interview, that the council should be balanced with people of different persuasions.
Yes.
What did you mean by that?
I just think that each of us has different views, different ideas that we bring to the, that we would bring to the council. I know that, as an example, you're bringing up the idea that I've got more of a Republican background.
No, I said your wife.
My wife, yeah.
I didn't say you, you know?
Well, that's true, that's true.
I know how those things go.
That's true.
And we won't speak for you when we talk about her background.
Absolutely. And I've got neighbors that are, and one is Republican, one is Democrat, living in the same household. I've got friends that are Democrats, friends that are Republicans. And I know that Gary Hanson was looking at getting an appointment by the governor. I don't know, you know, if that fell through, or what happened, but there, I know that there are various ideas, and every one of us brings something different, something unique to the table. And that's part of how I see it, is bringing just a little different balance, different persuasion, different views. And sometimes, even myself, we can, you can end up getting stale in a, in a position where you're simply doing the same thing over and over, where it's nice to have new perspective, new people coming in. I know that Paul has been in there for several years, Gary's been in there for several years. And part of the thing is, we just look at-
I think Meg and Cindy have been in there longer than either of them.
Longer than them, sure.
And speaking of political persuasions, Cindy was at one point affiliated with the Republican Party-
Right.
-if I'm not mistaken, so.
And I know that Meg also ran for the Democrat seat as well.
Okay, there we go. And those are different persuasions.
So, I know that there's different views, you bet, absolutely. So, it's just an opportunity to bring different views, different perspective into the city council.
Now, one of the things you said is that fiscal accountability is imperative.
Yes.
We have, among cities of 50,000 or more, I think we are the third lowest tax bracket in the state. So, where's the fiscal irresponsibility, if you see it as your responsibility?
I think we just need to keep focused on doing those sorts of things that are fiscally responsible among the-
I think actually that goes back to a former mayor by the name of Pat Awada Anderson-
Yes.
-who was, not only joust with me regularly here, but was a tough fiscal conservative. And I think that that has carried over to this council and to the administration.
She did a really good job. I certainly can't argue with that. I know that she brought some unique perspectives as well into the, into the office, and she had a great set of people working with her. Among the issues that came up was the imminent domain problem, that I believe was under her administration, when they actually kicked all the organizations, businesses, out of what was the former Cedarvale Mall.
Which was really lying fallow. This great piece of property was lying, wasn't generating income.
Right.
And that goes back quite a few years.
It does.
And took the first step, and the city council, I think, had the good sense not to do anything during the recession-
Yes.
-until employment was up, and incomes were up, and then they started, and they fortunately, I think, got this Paragon deal, which publicity-wise has been great for the city of Eagan.
Sure. Some have suggested, just in chatting with some of the neighbors in Eagan, some have suggested that the idea of using the Lockheed Martin site might have been a better use of land, and perhaps using the, what is now the outlet center area, and simply putting in apartments and townhouses and that sort of thing. The Lockheed Martin has certainly been sitting for quite a while there, and that, it seemed, it appears to be in a state of disrepair.
But of course, we've got to put the shopping center where the people who are controlling it want to be. And obviously, they want it to be right at the junction of 13 and 77, and the bus station, et cetera, so.
And I can understand that. There's an upside to allowing them to obviously build where they want, and it's a given. The downside is, it can be somewhat locked, in that there's an access coming in off of Nichols, there's an access coming in off of 13 at Silver Bell, whereas you already have businesses that are meeting at the Pilot Knob Yankee Doodle intersection. That would simply, in my mind, be the place where you'd want more business coming in.
But there are plans for that within the next year or two, if I'm not mistaken. Where that's going to open up, as I read in the papers, I don't know any more than that-
Right.
-that there are going to be some businesses in there, and some additional housing in there.
Right.
Well, there is a hotel going in down, next year, starting next year, at the Paragon area. And there's also some housing going in, I think condos down there also, so.
That will be good, absolutely. Among the various other things that came up is the cost that is associated with the outlet mall. It's been suggested that roughly $60 million of city money has been used, or involved in the process of putting in the outlet center. The flip side of that is, I heard about a business, I believe it's called a Rosemount Business, that's going in, in one of the southwest suburbs, I forget which one. And that business, they were talking about spending, I believe it's $20 million, to bring in 400 jobs. And on top of that, they're saying that there's probably another 800 jobs that are associated in the area, where you have retail and other opportunities that would come in and fill in around those. Kind of like if you have the US Navy. The Navy comes into an area, into a port, you have not just the Navy and the federal government paying in jobs, you have all of those support jobs that fill in around that. And that, to me, is a huge issue, where you're only spending a small amount to get such a huge return.
Well, in terms of the outlet mall, though, you have over 100 stores. Do you know how many employees that is bringing in?
I do not.
Because my guess would be that it's got to be about 800 to 1,000 employees-
Sure.
-if you have a store that's open from 10 till 9:00 at night.
Now, the question, the next argument that would go with that is perhaps obvious, is what are people being paid? If people are joining like this Rosemount organization, where most of the, or a large number of them are getting paid $30 an hour or more, $30 an hour is a living wage. That's a livable wage for a single, or for, maybe even for a couple. Whereas the retail, and I certainly don't begrudge them, I think that it's, I'm glad that we have that there, but the downside is, what are they getting? What are they getting paid? Typically, those are starting out at somewhere near minimum wage.
Which is an interesting question, because the legislature just raised the minimum wage here. Do you think that was a wise move on the part of the legislature?
You know, that's certainly not something the city council would tackle. I think that the, there are many-
When you're talking about $30 an hour-
Right.
-it's ultimately going to go to $9.50, which, to me, is not a living wage, but-
Right, it's not, absolutely. It's, in my opinion, you're seeing that those minimum wage jobs are, should be provided to teenagers, should be provided to young singles, young adults going into, going into college, needing that income just to help them get by. They're working at the McDonald's, they're working at the retail organizations, they need that to get things going. It should not be something for long-term.
We've been talking with Gail Anderson, the time goes by very quickly. He is running for the city council here in Eagan, and a first-time candidate, a man, obviously, who has some ideas and some thoughts about how things should change, and maybe how some things should stay the same. And thank you for coming in.
Thank you very much. Thank you for having me.
And we're back. Councilman of the city of Eagan, Gary Hanson, has been waiting very patiently, as we had to switch some things around today because of a personal problem with one of the guests. But he's here, and I thank you for being so patient.
Thank you for inviting me, Alan.
Six years a member of the council.
That's correct.
And many years' involvement in local government.
Well, before I was elected to the council, I served on the Eagan Planning Commission, chaired that for two years, and I was also on the County Planning Commission and chaired that for two years also. Actually, I was chair for three years on the Eagan Planning Commission, so gave me some preparation for the council.
And since you are elected to the council, you seem to have involvement in many different municipal functions. So, why don't you tell us about those?
Well, you know, over the last few years, I've gotten more involved, not only locally representing the council, but regionally. I represent the city of Eagan on the Dakota Communications Center Board, and what I do there is represent Eagan's interest in being sure that the operating expenses of the DCC are, you know, fair in terms of what the Eagan taxpayers are contributing to it, and also assuring prompt and effective police and fire service on that board. I've represented Eagan on the Minnesota Valley Transit Authority for the past few years. I chaired that for the past two years, and once again, representing Eagan's interest to assure that we have good transit available for our residents here in Eagan. On top of that, I currently chair the Suburban Transit Association, which is the regional association of the suburban transit providers. There are currently six of those, the MBTA is one of those. And we lobby the legislature for the funding that is needed to support transit operations. And so, it's been a very good experience in learning how the legislature works, and in representing the STA. I'm also a member of the Regional Transportation Advisory Board, which works with the Metropolitan Council to approve funding and implementation of transportation and transit programs across the region. And I'm also involved with the, I'm on the board of the Metro Cities, which works to promote best practices of the cities in the metro area, and, you know, to share those practices, and to try to, you know, be more cost-effective and efficient in our operations.
And on the seventh day, he rested.
Well, it keeps me busy.
But it keeps you busy, but it keeps Eagan prominent in what's going on in the region with the associations and commissions that are very important and vital to how we function in this city.
Very much so. And I consider it an honor to be invited to participate on boards such as the Metro Cities. I think that's a sign of respect for Eagan, and, you know, how we're held, the regard that we're held within the metropolitan area.
And it's also a sign of respect for you, because obviously, your reputation has now preceded you.
You're very kind, thank you.
Back to Eagan. Last time I saw a demographic of people in Eagan, 95% of them said this was a great place to live.
Yes.
You could count me among them, but-
Well, thank you. And we do that resident survey every two years, and we're doing one again this year. I'm not sure where we are in that process, but you're right, the last time around, it was in that 95% to 97% approval rating.
People love living here.
They do.
Quality of life here, speaking for myself, is just wonderful.
And that's been reinforced to me as I have been going door-to-door and talking with people. I always invite them to let me know, do you have any issues or concerns about Eagan? Anything we can do better? Nobody really has had any big problems, you know, and they say, we love it here in Eagan, keep doing what you're doing.
And the fact of the matter is, that we have a low tax base here.
We do.
One of the lowest of any city in the state, with 50,000 people or more. And people certainly are happy about that.
We have the fifth lowest tax rate in the metro region among cities of our size. And I think something that contributes to that, that the council can be proud of, is that we have the third lowest per capita total cost of cities of 50,000 or more population in the state of Minnesota. So, I think that shows fiscal restraint.
Shows that city government is functioning at a low premium, as opposed to a high premium, and yet it's premium, premium.
And still able to provide high-quality services, that's correct, yes.
And how does that affect the bond rating?
Well, it's very good for the bond rating. We've had a AAA bond rating from Moody's for the past few years, and recently, we were able to achieve a AAA rating from S&amp;P, which is something that we've strived for over the years. And that's unique, because there are only about 275 cities in the United States who have a AAA rating from both Moody's and S&amp;P, and we're in that group.
And that makes it easier for us to borrow money-
That's correct.
-and cheaper to borrow money.
Makes it cheaper, and the taxpayer should be interested in that, because if we do need to issue bonds, we can do so at a lower cost, and that's very important.
Now, one of the criticisms that came up from some of the other people running for council this year was the fact that money was spent, several millions of dollars, on a parking ramp for the new Paragon Mall, although everybody acknowledges that the Paragon Mall is a boon to the city of Eagan and to the tax base, and will have, I had estimates as to how many people will be employed there, but I now understand it's over 2,000. So, talk to the parking ramp, and the need for the parking ramp.
Well, you know- Well, you know, as, as we were negotiating with the developer, it became apparent to the council that we were going to have to provide a certain amount of infrastructure to make this thing go. And personally, I'm convinced that if we were not willing to play a part in building that parking ramp, we might not have those outlet shops there. Along with the 1,600 jobs that go with those outlet shops, and the additional development that's going to occur in the Cedar Grove area. We've got a Hilton Hotel that's coming in to the area. We've got some row houses. Ryland is proposing to build some row houses on the south side of that development. We have a market-rate apartment and retail complex nearby, and it's just been great for the area and the businesses around that area.
And there's something going up to Jensen's, which has been refurbished and is flourishing at the moment.
Yes, absolutely.
I don't know, is that a housing development or a senior citizen?
Well, the development, yeah, right by Jensen's would be the market-rate apartments and retail complex. It's going to be apartments, I believe a four-story apartment complex, and the first level will be retail shops, so--
And, you know, we have parks, we have lakes, we have, really, to my way of thinking, thinking back to the last horrible winter, really good, functioning city services that cleared our roads and kept everything really moving at an amazing clip, so--
And that's, that's really all part of what people do enjoy about Egan. You know, when we have the bad winters and the challenges of removing snow, it gets done, and people appreciate that. We have the parks, as you said. I mean, everybody raves about the green space in Egan, and we're committed to preserving as much of that as we can and improving on that. So parks, you know, police and fire protection is all top-notch, and we need to continue with that.
And I've just recently been through the new fire building, which is an amazing operation, the one on Yankee Doodle.
Mm-hmm.
Functional, forward-thinking, able to perform a lot of services for the city. And we frequently have the police chief on here. We're one of the safest cities in the state.
Correct.
Good fire department. We've had to put on some full-time firemen because of a lack of volunteers, but that seems to be augmented by the federal government to some degree.
Well, and that's, you know, that situation with the firefighters and losing some volunteers is not unique to Egan, because it's happening nationwide.
Aging population.
Well, and we, and frankly, people are so busy with their own personal lives, they don't have time to volunteer to be a firefighter like they used to do. So we're experimenting with some of these options in terms of the paid firefighters that you mentioned. We got a federal grant to be able to do that. We have to take a look at our facilities in terms of fire protection, because we need to be assured that we have the utmost coverage in all of the areas of Egan, and yet be able to do that at a cost-effective rate. And so we'll be taking a look at what we might be able to do to help bolster our volunteer ranks in the fire department, as maybe some additional options for some paid firefighters and improving our facilities.
Talk about diversification and the growth of the tax base.
Well, obviously, we've seen a lot of growth in retail recently in Egan. We've already talked about the outlet shops and the jobs that those have brought to Egan. We have some additional challenges ahead of us to be sure that we keep growing in an orderly manner. You know, Egan is at the age of, you know, going on 50 years now in terms of some of the development that has occurred. We'll have to redevelopment, redevelop some of our residential and commercial areas. And as we do that, you know, we need to figure out what are the services that the community needs, and how can we best meet those retail services? For example, we've got the Lockheed Martin site that we'll be taking a look at to figure out what would be best in there.
Yeah, one of the other council members, somebody seeking the council, I should say, mentioned that as a place where the Paragon Mall should have gone in. And I said, well, number one, I think the Paragon Mall people wanted it exactly where it is, and that should count. And number two, what about the Lockheed Martin site?
Well, and in terms of Paragon, the developers wanted it in that location--
Yeah.
--because of its proximity to the highways, you know, and to the transit station there, which is going to spur some additional economic transit-oriented development in the area. You know, there's a different plan for the Lockheed Martin site. It'll be a different type of retail and mixed-use area. Our hope is that it will be complementary, you know, to the outlet shops.
But it'll be more jobs.
More jobs, correct, yes.
And more homes of some sort.
There is the potential. At some time in the future, there could be a residential aspect to that site also. But right now, I think, you know, we're talking about some retail shops, probably a grocery store there, and some restaurants, and some medical facilities, so--
So all in all, what else would you say?
It's a different type of development from the outlet shops at Cedar Grove, yeah.
What would you say are the highlights of the six years that you've been on the council?
Well, I think the highlights have been, you know, what we've been able to do in terms of, again, maintaining a low-cost tax base, and yet, you know, be able to use the resources that we have to provide top-quality services, which has been very pleasing to our population. I've been involved very much in transit and transportation.
That was the next thing I was going to bring up.
You know, and now we've got the Metro Red Line on Cedar Avenue. We've got, we'll be working on improvements to the Cedar Grove Transit Station. That will improve the Red Line connection, so the buses won't have to leave Cedar Avenue and go onto Nichols and then go back onto Cedar. It'll be, it'll make that more effective and a more attractive means to get to the Cedar Grove area and to shop there. But I think it's the orderly development and the redevelopment that we've seen over the last several years that I've been on the council, and the fact that I think that we've listened to what the people are telling us, and we've responded to their needs.
Also, I think the council listens to each other. You don't always agree with each other, but you handle it in a nonpartisan way, and I really think that that is very beneficial to the people who live here in Egan.
We all have different personalities on the council, and I think we use that to our benefit, and we complement each other. For example, Councilmember Bakken, you know, he's, he's more inward-focused in terms of his work on the Finance Committee and the Public Works Committee, and we rely on him and that committee for recommendations that come to the council. On the other hand, my involvement, as we've already talked about, has been not only locally but outward and regionally, in terms of representation of Egan on these various boards and committees. And so I think we really do complement each other in the different roles that we've played on the council.
And we see some of the antagonisms that some of the other cities have had, and we've never experienced that in Egan. And obviously, it says something positive--
Since I've been on the council, you know, we, as you said, we've had disagreements, but we've been able to talk those out and listen to each other's point of view. That doesn't necessarily mean that we will always agree, but we'll respect each other's opinion, and we'll move on from there, and arrive at the best decision in the interests of Egan residents and businesses. So that's our philosophy.
Councilman Gary Hanson, who is running for reelection, and a pleasure to have you here. We wish you good luck.
Thank you very much.